Good evening, everybody. This is Steve Linell, Chair of the City of Nashua Zoning Board of Adjustment, and this is the November 9th, 2021 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third-floor auditorium of Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website, nashua-nh.gov/318/ctv. The public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-821-2049, and they will help you connect. In the event that the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the meeting. To the extent practicable and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case, followed by questions by the Board. Next, persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or in opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. All participants should endeavor to comply with the timeframes of 15 minutes maximum for the applicant and five minutes each for anyone wishing to speak in favor or in opposition or with questions. Let's see, we don't have a light timer, but we will have a timer on the Zoom meeting that will indicate how much time is left in for each person who's speaking. Please note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call vote. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for variances. I don't think we have any special exceptions tonight. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that the ordinance does not permit. Variances have five points of law to be met that will be summarized in Board motions. Per the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting, and we do have a quorum tonight. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we make a decision that you believe is an error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact the Planning Department for more information. So for this meeting tonight, we have the following full Board members in attendance. We have myself, Steve Linell, I am the Chair. We do not have Mary Ellen McKay, who is our Vice Chair. We do have Mr. Jack Courier, who is our Clerk. We have Mr. JP Boucher and Mr. Rob Shaw. And let's see, I see we have on the alternate members on Zoom, we have Jay Mankara. I can't see who else, is anybody else there?
That's it.
That's it, okay. In addition to Board members-
My name is Daniel Clark, and I'm also here.
You're not a Board member?
Yeah, we're just asking for Board members right at the moment. Thank you. In addition to Board members, we also have with us here in the room with Mr. Carter Falk, who's the Deputy Planning Manager, Ms. Kate Corrier, the zoning coordinator, and there's Matt Sullivan here? No, he is not here, okay. So let us start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. For Board members participating by Zoom, please also state whether there is anyone in the room with you, which is required under the right-to-know law, and state your reason for not attending in person. And we'll start with-
Who's in the hall?
Start with Mr. Jay Mankara, who's on Zoom, and so you get to go first.
Jay Mankara is present. I am unable to attend in person for health reasons. I actually have a nasty cold that I don't think I should share, and I'm a little-
Okay. Jack Courier?
Present. Jack Courier is present in the room.
JP Boucher?
JP Boucher is present.
Rob Shaw?
Present.
And myself, Steve Linell, I am present. So we have five members in attendance, and all five will be voting. So since all five will be voting, we won't talk about alternates. Mr. Falk, are there changes to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Mr. Chair. The case for L. Bowers Street has been postponed to the November 23rd, 2021 meeting. It will not be heard tonight.
Thank you. Okay, I will now read the first, before I start, are there any questions from the audience about the procedures that we're going to follow? I will ask those in the room, please silence your cellphones and beware that any talking we can, the acoustics in this room are excellent, and we can hear everything, so if you need to have a conversation, please step outside in the hallway and close the door behind you for that. So now I'll read the first case into the record. The owner is Principio Family Trust, Tracy Principio trustee, addresses 11 Monica Drive, Sheet B, Lot 856, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-192, Section C, to exceed maximum 24-foot wide driveway width, 27 feet proposed to repave an existing 27-foot wide driveway. This is in the R18 zone, Word 8. Is there somebody here to present the case?
Hi, this is Tracy. I'm on the Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Please let us know what you'd like to do. Give your name and address for the resident, please.
I'm Tracy Principio. I live at 11 Monica Drive in Nashua.
Okay, proceed.
So the house is only seven years old, but the driveway has already sank considerably to the point where there's a noticeable gap before the garage, and so we decided that we would just get it resurfaced, just another top coat on top to bring it up to the inch and a half that it's lost. I got some estimates, had people come in and take some measurements, and that's when I found out that my driveway was too wide. I had no idea. And you can see from the curbing that was put in last summer, maybe the summer before, that-
Well, the city-
My wife is here, actually, isn't that? Yeah, so the city put in the curbing. I just want to, I just want to put in a, you know, another layer on top, but that's when I found out that it's too wide. So yes, we're looking for a variance. Obviously, the builder never got a variance when the house was built. We had no idea. Yeah, we just want to, we just want to, nothing will ever be, it'll all look the same how it looks right now.
Okay.
That's about it.
Thanks. Any questions from the Board? Mr. Courier?
Yeah, I was wondering, when you purchased the house, did you purchase it from the builder? Did you buy it new?
We bought the land, and then we hired the builder to, we created the design for the house and hired a builder to build it.
So was the three-bay garage part of the initial design?
It was, yes.
Okay, so that, again, like you were saying, that driveway was put in like that in the very beginning?
It was.
Okay, I guess that's my only question.
Any other Board members with questions here in the room? Mr. Mankara, no questions? Okay. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the application? Anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
Mr. Chair, there was an email in favor. I believe it was forwarded to the Board from Mr. Burke at 15 Monica Drive. Does the Board have that email?
I saw the email myself.
See, I thought I had printed out-
It was in the packet, and it should be right behind, it says Case Number One, and then it says Case Number Two.
Oh, yes.
It would be separate than the case report. Do you want this one here?
Here, can we get it for me?
I don't think I saw that.
It was not in the original package.
It was here tonight.
Oh, I see, okay. Oh, I get it, okay, I see, I, thank you. All right, so we did get an email, and this comes from Thomas Burke of 15 Monica Drive. He writes, "I recommend approval of the variance request from the owner of 11 Monica Drive. My name is Thomas J. Burke, owner, resident of 15 Monica Drive for the past 35 years, one door away. I pass the property multiple times a day and can affirm that approval will have no impact on the neighborhood or environment. The driveway is totally unobtrusive because of a privacy fence and exceptional landscaping. The home is one of the jewels of our neighborhood. As a former Chairman of the Nashua Conservation Commission, I'm very concerned when natural areas of our city are disturbed. Fortunately, the owners of 11 Monica Drive designed the house in landscaping to complement the wooded area and neighborhood that we value dearly. They are exceptional examples of conscientious neighbors and environmental stewards. Recommend approval." Thank you. So we do have that letter in favor. Again, are there anybody, is there anybody with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application?
I don't know if you specifically asked on Zoom or not, after that, but-
That includes on Zoom. Is there anybody on the call who wishes to speak with questions, concerns, or opposition? Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Courier, your comments?
Well, in general, I'm not enthusiastic about oversized driveways. You know, I go by this property all the time. I didn't, I would have guessed it was meeting the requirement because it was a new house. So it's been there, I, and I guess I think it's a reasonable request, given the three-car garage that, you know, it leads to. So I was thinking, like, what sort of special condition is there? I mean, it seems it's kind of a plea of, you know, ignorance on behalf of the owner, but it happens all the time, nothing against the owner, that he walked into it, and now it's been there for seven years, so that is kind of a special condition, I think, so I'm favorable to it, but I'm interested to hear other opinions.
Mr. Boucher?
I'm in favor of the application. Again, the owner is strictly just looking to re-top coat, even if he was looking to repaint the driveway, it's in favor. And again, it's existing, no issues on the neighborhood, it appears, and having driven down that road a couple of times, I know that this property is very nice property, well, very well maintained. And it's just interesting, at the time of the building of the house, I mean, the garage is not really far off the road, it's closer to the road, so it's just, it doesn't really matter to me, but just interesting at the time that it didn't get caught during the building process. It would have been, to me, maybe an obvious thing if I, you know, as an inspector, I'm not, again, they do, they do very good work, they work hard, it's just three-car garage, but something got missed or something, but at this point, to me, it's existing, I don't think it, you know, overpowers anything, so I'm in favor of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Likewise, I'm in favor. I think the fact, again, that this has existed since the home was constructed, the neighbor, at least one, you know, neighbor by testimony is in favor, and as Mr. Boucher was just noting, the driveway length is not that long, or the house is not that set that far back from the road, so I think it actually would be difficult, it appears, to probably meet the 24-foot width and still actually have paved access appropriate to the three garage bays. So I think for those reasons, I am in support.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara?
I'm also in support, I agree with Mr. Shaw's comments, and would also note that it appears, at least from testimony of the neighbor, that the house was kept closer to the road in order to preserve the woodland area to the rear, which appears to be of value, and would just note that it's a relatively minor deviation, and it appears that the deviation was, it's existing, but it was not, it was caused not through any fault of the owners, so I support the application.
Thank you. I also support the application, although I'm disturbed that this issue was not detected when the building permit plans were submitted, et cetera, but that's, that happened, so, but I agree that it's a minor excursion from the code and from the ordinance, and it would be reasonable to grant the variance. So would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Principio Family Revocable Trust, Tracy Principio trustee, owner, 11 Monica Drive, Sheet B, Lot 856, requesting variance from land use code Section 190-192, Section C, to exceed maximum 24-foot wide driveway width, 27 feet proposed to repave an existing 27-foot wide driveway, in the R18 zone, Word 8. We find that the variance is needed to enable applicants' proceeds to property, given the special conditions of property. Again, we spoke about the fact that this is, has been existing since the property was built, and that the house is located closer to the street. We find that the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other benefit, some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will inadvertently affect property values of surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? Okay. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Mankara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mankara votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Linell, vote in favor. It's five-nothing, congratulations, your variance has been approved. Please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Contact the Planning Department if you have any questions.
Thank you very much.
We move on to Case Number Two. The owner is Mark Materazzo Jr., addresses 10 La France Avenue, Sheet 48, Lot 229, requesting the following variances from land use code Section 190-31. One, to encroach four feet into the six-foot required rear yard setback, and two, to encroach two feet into the six-foot required right side yard setback. Both request to maintain an existing 10-foot by 20-foot shed. This is in the R18 zone, Word Three. Is there somebody online or in the, oh, in the audience, please step up to the lectern and give your name and address to the record, and tell us what you'd like to do.
I'm Mark Materazzo, I live at 10 La France Ave.
Just walk us through your case.
Well, I have, I, when I first moved in, when I first bought the house, it was in the back, right where the existing shed is. It was two sheds put together, and the shed was actually used as the fence line, the old shed, and one side of it was caving in, the other side had just animals living in it. It was, it was basically just very unsafe, so I decided to take it down and just upgrade the shed. I didn't want any more animals in there, so I poured a concrete slab and just built the, built the same exact size that was there. I didn't think I, I thought it would be in the same, the right place, because it was right where the original existing shed was. That was my fault, I just figured I was making it safer, because I got three kids and a dog, and that's basically it.
Any questions from the Board? Not seeing anybody in the room. Mr. Mankara has a question.
Yeah, I was just going to ask if I could about the stop work order. It appears that there was a stop work order issued in December of 19.
Yes, yes, it was after everything was built. The only thing that's not on it is the siding, and that's it. I haven't touched it, I haven't touched it since, and because first, I didn't have the money to put up to how, to try and get the variance, so I asked, I, even when I came in to ask about it, she said it would cost this much, and I was like, I don't have that much money right now. And she was like, well, I'll put a note in saying that, you know, that I can't do it right now for the variance, and I just, I haven't touched it, because it was a stop work order, was trying to do what they told me to do, and the only thing that's on it is tieback, and it's just weather tight, just the only thing that's not on it is the siding and the trim, that's it.
Is that all, Mr. Mankara?
Yes, for now.
Any other comments or questions from the Board? Questions from the Board, okay. Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Is there anybody who wishes to, who has questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? Not seeing anybody, nobody on Zoom, all right. You may sit down, sir.
I just, actually, I just have a question.
Oh, okay, please give your name and address to the record.
Daniel Clark, 20 Academy Drive.
Okay, and what is your question?
So Mark is moving in a week, and new neighbors are coming in.
Um, I'm-
One moment, I, I didn't understand the question. Could you, could you, the acoustics of the Zoom call are a little bit bad here. Could you just say it again slower, please?
New owners are moving in that I don't, that I obviously don't know, and so I'm not sure what their responsibility will be to finish this shed. The old sheds were not as high as the one that's there now. The new shed is not finished, and it's almost, I don't know, maybe two stories high, so it's higher than the sheds that were there before. And with the new people moving in, obviously, I don't know them like I know Mark. Mark was going to finish it eventually, but if the new people do not finish it, and it is not protected from weather and rotting, you know, it potentially could rot and fall on the fence that's there and into the yards. So I just, because I don't know the new, you know, the new neighbors moving in and their plans to, to finish the shed, I'm just concerned about, you know, what will happen in the future with that being, you know, so, so much taller than the other sheds, you know, if it falls down on the fence or into the neighboring yards, I, I just, there's a little bit of uncertainty as, as what will happen with the unfinished shed. Because it's taller, it's, it's a little bit more of a concern than the other sheds. I don't know, I just, so I just, I just don't know a lot about this topic, and it's hard to know what's going to happen in the future. I feel bad for Mark, because he wasn't able to finish it before he's moving. So, you know, I, I, I mean, I don't see, I don't see what, what could happen, I, I don't know if he can finish it before he moves to protect it, you know, and preserve it a little bit longer. So that's my only concern, I guess.
Okay, thank you. I will note that there are ordinances regarding heights of accessory buildings. I do not, I don't have any information as to whether this new shed meets those regulations, but that's not something that we're discussing today. Mr. Courier, did you have a comment?
Well, I had a question for the speaker, and that is, she mentioned that this shed is taller than the other sheds, and I didn't know if she was mentioning that as if that's problematic in her mind or not an issue.
Well, the taller, the shed, the old sheds would fall, and they would fall to the ground, and they wouldn't damage anything. The new shed is taller, so it wouldn't cringe on, it would definitely reach into the neighboring properties. It would go, you know, I have, I have kids myself, and I have pets myself, and, you know, it could potentially, you know, if it did fall, it would danger, you know, somebody in the, in the surrounding area, for sure, if they were there.
Okay, thank you. I'm all set.
Okay. Are there, is there anybody else with questions, concerns, or opposition? Mr. Materazzo, you have five minutes to respond to the questions and concerns.
Concerns about the shed falling. It is weather tight, it has tieback around the whole thing, the roofing is on, all the trim on the corners are on. The only thing I haven't done to it is put on the siding because of the stop work order came, but the shed is, is sound, it's built, it's built to code, there's nothing wrong with it. The only thing was is that we didn't get the permit, because to my knowledge, from, maybe I just got bad information, is that it was under 200 square feet, so I didn't need to have a permit. If that, if I do need one, that's fine, I will get a permit, and that's fine, and have it inspected. But there is nothing wrong with the shed or anything, the way it's built, everything is to code.
Okay, and, and given the height?
The height of it is taller, because the walls, I went, I used 10-foot studs for the walls, because I have, I fix my kids' bikes, I have three boys and a dog, and they drive, they ride bikes and everything else, and I have a lot in there, and that's it, which by, by a code, you can have up to 10-foot walls without having fire blocking, if you go over 10 feet, so I figured just a 10-foot wall would be fine. And it's in the back of the house, in the trees, you can't even see it unless you, like, come around the side, it's not blocking anybody's view or anything like that, but if it comes to falling down, that isn't going to happen. Like I said, I could pull a permit, have it inspected, it doesn't make a difference to me, because I know it's 100%.
We're not, here, we're not concerned about permits, we're concerned about the setback requirements.
Yes, no, I, I understand that. When I had it built, I just, I thought if I put it in the same position where the original one was, I would be okay. That's my fault, I did not know, and I don't know what else to say about that.
Okay. Question? Mr. Courier?
If the Board were to approve this-
Yes.
-application, you'd have a green light to finish it.
Okay, yes.
Is your intent to finish it before you sell the house, or were you going to sell the house?
I am actually closing on the 17th, and I can't close unless this passes. So if that is a requirement for this to pass, I'll side it, I don't care. I'll eat, I'll eat the money to decide, it doesn't matter.
I didn't quite, I mean, is a requirement of the closing that you have the house, the shed sided?
No, it's, as long as it's, it's water, water sound, with the tieback and the roofing on it, they were ready to close. It's just this variance that I have to take care of for, to close.
I see. Mr. Boucher?
Just wanted to, just verify again, you said the previous two sheds that were put together were right on the property line?
They were actually used as the fence line.
As a fence line.
And I pulled it back a little bit and actually fixed the fence, because animals and everything were coming in.
So, so, so behind the shed right now, is there now a continuous fence that-
Yes.
-that separates you? Okay.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions from the Board? No, okay. And I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting.
Actually, I have to, you need to give the person that-
Oh, you're right, you're right. I didn't get her name, but-
Ms. Clark.
Sorry?
Ms. Clark.
Ms. Clark, if you wish, it's, it's optional, you have five minutes to make a statement regarding the things that you heard from Mr. Materazzo.
I don't really have too much to say, just that the fence that's there now is falling down, but that's it.
Okay, thank you. Now I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw, any comments?
You can have a seat now.
Thank you.
I, I mean, I think it's, it seems like one of those, you know, classic unfortunate situations, homeowner thought he was doing the right thing, obviously wasn't completely, and apparently didn't understand the code. I do think the fact that he's actually moved the shed back- Um, I do think the fact that, uh, he's actually moved the shed back some from the original encroachment. Uh, and, uh, I think the, the, I see no real negative effects from, from where the shed is placed. Uh, I'm willing to support it.
Mr. Boucher.
I'm going to support it for the same reason that Mr. Shaw stated. Again, I think there's been an improvement, um, to, to, to what's been there. Um, and again, I, again, I know that as, as the applicant noted, this is way back in the back corner. If you look at the surrounding properties, this is really the back, back of all people, all the, all the surrounding properties. So, um, again, I don't think it's going to be obtrusive. Um, I do understand, uh, the neighbor's concerns, um, but I think, again, um, I believe that, that, that the shed is sound and, uh, uh, if, if the shed was at the, at the setback, they, and again, if a shed were to collapse and it was, it was within, uh, the guidelines, it could still fall into, you know, neighboring property if it's, you know, at the height. So, again, going back, I, I believe that's a net gain, uh, for what, what's happened here. So I'm just going to support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Currier.
Yeah, I, I look at this as if, say it was, an application came before us and there was no shed built or just the old one was there, there was, let's say, no action taken yet on behalf of the homeowner. I, I think it's a reasonable request for the location of the shed. We've certainly seen an awful lot of requests over the years to incur within the six feet. Uh, my drive-by of the property, if, if I wanted a shed, I would probably like it in the same spot versus taking up valuable yard space on a yard that has a hill to it. Uh, I could see it clearly from the street. I mean, uh, so in summary, just as Mr. Boucher and Shaw stated, for those same reasons as well, I, I'm in favor of it. If this was a new request, looking at it that way, I, I think I'd still be in favor of it. The only thought I had is the unfinished shed, I mean, I guess, if, if the, if the owner wasn't closing right away, I'd be inclined to just stipulate that within six months or 30 days it gets finished off. But I, I think that would be unreasonable because there's a date set for closing and having the permit for this, you know, seems to clear the path for that. So I was a little, you know, I guess we could hope that the future homeowner would finish it off because I, I think you can see it from the street and it kind of looks like work in progress and it's, looks like it's been that way for two years now, but, so I'm, I'm okay with it, uh, for the reasons it's just stated and that's where I'm at.
Okay. Mr. Mancara.
I, I'm struggling a little bit more with it and, and I think that while I, I would probably reluctantly, um, support it, um, my concern is, and I do look at it as to whether or not I would support this, uh, if it were a new application, if the shed weren't already there. And I think one of the benefits of having a application coming in before the shed is constructed is that the neighbor do have an opportunity to see what the plans are. They do have an opportunity to ask questions, whether it's concerned about the height, uh, et cetera. And given the fact that, um, applying for a variance is obviously a public process, uh, almost certainly, uh, once they got the variance, uh, they would apply for a permit. So that's my discomfort, that, um, you know, there isn't, there has been no permit issued and there, um, at, at least at this point, presumably won't be. And, um, although if, if they wanted to finish the shed, assume they would have to, uh, apply for both of them. And of course, there's been no inspection. Realistically, given the time between now and closing, I think it's going to be very hard to put a condition on there that a permit, uh, be issued in the inspection to be had. Uh, so I guess I'm, I'm supporting it, um, but with, with, with a lot of reluctance for those reasons.
Thank you. Um, I'm sort of with Mr. Mancara. I, I'm generally reluctant to, to, uh, support of, you know, oops, I didn't know. Um, and, uh, but, you know, given, I, I also sort of agree with Mr. Currier that if this had come before us as a new application, um, probably would have accepted it, but, um, you know, for something that, that seeks permission after the fact rather than before, I, I, a little bit more reluctant, but I, I think I'm going to support this anyway because I don't really see a, a good alternative. Mr. Currier, you, you have another comment?
Yes, I do, thank you. Um, you know, I was very sensitive when the abutter spoke about the height because as Mr. Mancara, you know, correctly states, if this were done correctly, the abutters could, could weigh in on that. And I've seen in the past where height of a shed right near the property line can be an issue to an abutter. But, uh, you know, Ms. Clark's only concern about that was, was if it were to fall down. And my, my sense is that, you know, it is weather tight, uh, it, it, it would be inspected if it's, you know, approved. And, and I, I, I don't, I, I mean, I, I wouldn't be, I'm not concerned that it could fall over the fence line and, and, and injure people. I, I, I'm going to, I'm putting my faith that it is constructed properly. It will be inspected if it's approved. And the height of it doesn't appear to be like a cosmetic issue to the abutters. So I just wanted to throw that out, that that goes into my support for it.
Any other comments from the board? No, okay. Uh, would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Mark S. Materazzo, owner, 11 La France Ave, Sheet 48, Lot 229.
10 La France.
Ton, 10 La France Ave, did I say something different, sorry. 10 La France Ave, Sheet 48, Lot 229, requesting the following variances from Land Use Code Section 190-31. One, to encroach four feet into the six-foot required rear yard setback. And two, to encroach two feet into the six-foot required right side yard setback. Both request to maintain an existing 10 by 20 shed, it's in the IRA Zone Ward 3. We find that the variances needed to enable the applicant's purchase of the property, given the special conditions of the property. Again, uh, there was, uh, an existing shed, sheds by testimony that were right on the property line. Um, and again, unbeknownst, the applicant did move the shed, uh, in a bit, but still is encroaching. Uh, we find that, uh, this, uh, movement is, um, um, more of a benefit to the, uh, the applicant and the property owners and surrounding properties, um, by moving, by having, by moving the shed even though, um, they need a variance and, uh, he's here after the fact. We find that the benefits offered by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonable feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the variance. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it would not adversely affect property values and surrounding parcels. We find it's not contrary to public interest and we find that substantial justice would be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
And Mr. Shaw, thank you for your second. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? Mr. Currier, how do you vote?
Mr. Currier votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Lionel, vote in favor. Uh, it's five to nothing, congratulations, your variance has been approved. Uh, please be aware, there's a 30-day window of appeal. Um, I know you're closing in a week, but, um, that's the way it is. And contact the planning department if you have any questions. Next is case number three. Tavares Estevez Corporation, 58, address is 58 Chestnut Street, Sheet 81, Lot 69, requesting the following use variance from Land Use Code Section 190-15, Table 15-1, Item 90, to maintain existing first-floor convenience store and one dwelling unit on second floor and to create one dwelling unit on the first floor in back of the convenience store and one additional dwelling unit on the second floor for a total of three dwelling units. And two, variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for a minimum land area, 4429 square feet, existing 10,00454 square feet required. This is in the RC Zone Ward 4. So you see somebody to present the case, please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Gerald Preuner, I'm an attorney in Nasher at 20 Trafalgar Square and here representing the applicant this evening. I think I have to take my glasses off sometimes a little bit because it's, I, with the mask on, this stuff comes up and it fogs up the glasses a little bit, I'm not used to doing this very much. Um, what we have is a building that's located at 58 Chestnut Street in Nasher. It has a store, uh, on the first floor, it has a vacant space in the rear, it has an apartment on the second floor and a vacant space on the second floor. Um, the, what is being proposed is to renovate the two vacant spaces and put apartments in them. If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just, uh, I'm sure that you probably have the, uh, the plan for the building, but if I can give it to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
As you can see by the first two pages of the handout that was presented to you, um, you can see the unfinished and proposed apartments on the first floor and on the second floor. The proposed apartment on the second floor has been used as an apartment years ago, but it's been discontinued. And after a period of two years, because of the dimensional requirements, we have to come back and ask for a, uh, variance for that as well. The area is an RC area, which allows apartments. I've given you a density survey and a number of apartments that surround, uh, this particular building. It is used for apartments in the area. The proposal is to renovate those two vacant spaces into apartments and comply with the Nasher Building Code. There are no exterior changes. The building will be the same after the renovations, if the variance is granted, as it is before. The, um, demand for apartments and for buildings in, in Nasher, um, I don't have to say, uh, that there, there's a big need for it. It's almost in the papers every night in magazines, whatever it is. The state of New Hampshire, not only Nasher, is in need of housing, uh, for this particular area. As I said, the ordinance meets the spirit, it's, it's apartment zone. Um, the dimension of the requirements are the reasons we are here for this evening, for the, uh, the apartments themselves. Uh, I think that the, the, I don't have to tell you that the area in of itself in Nasher is in need of apartments. And the renovation of those spaces would be a big help to try to, well, it would, it would help in any case in trying to take care of the housing. And as I've said, the building itself, there's no exterior changes, there's no additions to it. It is just renovating the apart, the open space, the vacant space in the building. I'd be glad to, it's a simple matter, but it's a very important matter, but I'd be glad to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Mr. Currier.
I'm just wondering when the second-floor backspace, you had mentioned in days of old that was an apartment, but no longer. What, what year did that cease to be or brought back into code to not be an apartment?
The one that's vacant?
Yeah, what's, uh, you have, what you show here is proposed apartment number.
I've been trying to find that out because I wanted to present that to the board and I haven't been able to find how long ago it was, it became vacant. All I can do is tell you is that I believe that it has been at least two years. It would have been much easier to just ignore that and let it go as an apartment if we could have, but it has been vacant, so we have to come to your board to, uh, request the variance.
Uh, another question I have is, uh, I guess I was, you know, uh, maybe a little disappointed to see the, to realize, I mean, I've gone by this, uh, facility, you know, hundreds of times, but, you know, look at it closely when an application shows up. And I guess, uh, I was, you know, like disappointed to see that the doors, the entrance to the convenience store opened into what would be the driveway, you know, for the apartments there. And I thought, man, is that, to me, that seems like a precarious situation. If, if this were to be approved, there's certainly going to be a driveway full of stacked parking. I mean, I see three different families, there's no other way than to have, than to have stacked parking. So that, that's an observation. I guess another observation I make is, I've always found this section of Chestnut Street to be pretty congested. When school buses are there and at rush hour, I mean, I just see a lot of double, I find a lot of double parking. And I'm kind of, you know, we all know it's one-way, but I'm kind of on the left side, right side. When the trash cans are out, I find that kind of, uh, challenging. And then just beyond this, how the road kind of splits and goes over the rail trail, that in its, of itself is, is kind of a driving challenge. And as cars back up, you know, you don't want to block the rail trail, but there's just, I find a lot of congestion on this road and I'm just having an uneasy feeling about the overage on this. And I'd just like you to address those concerns I have.
If I may answer your question, starting with the last one first.
Sure.
Uh, the downtown area is the downtown area. It's, it's there, it's, um, my client cannot do anything about that. He has a large driveway that can handle some of the parking requirements for, for his store and for, for the, um, the apartments in the safe. There's a, a lot of things with the downtown area and with the new parking study that the city has entered into and so forth, they're going to try and take care of those things. But my part, my client in of himself cannot do this. The first question is, he purchased this building about a year ago, a little over a year ago. And when he was looking to see what he could do, he was told that he shouldn't do anything unless he got some permits, which is the correct way of doing it. So he never did any correction of the doors and so forth, the renovation. What he would like to do is to do it all at once. But he did not want to do anything that would impair his chances of trying to do something. So I think that you, you would find that even though I said that there would be no exterior additions, there'll be some repair, additional repairs and maybe some painting. But it's not, uh, it's not something that he, that he does not want to do. He wants to do it, but to fix the whole place up at once. And he was looking for, he did not want to go, because the first thing he did was talk to the city of Nasher and, um, Kate was a big help to he and his architect in saying, these are the things that you need and that's why we're here, to, to try to do those things. He hired an architect, as giving an example, to try to fix up the place for the apartments. So it wasn't something where he's trying to ignore something. He just wants to make sure he does it right.
So, uh, this.
I, I like to do something about your parking situation and so forth, but, um, there's very little that a lot of people can do about the parking. Maybe with the new parking study, there will be some changes made. But till the Alderman, uh, study that and the planning board studies that report, uh, I, I can't, all I can tell you is there's been a report provided.
Okay, thank you.
Is that, is that it, Mr. Currier?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, anybody else with questions from the board? Mr. Mancara. Okay. Anybody else with questions from the board? Mr. Mankara.
So two questions. What was the prior use of the first floor vacant space?
The first floor in the rear, the vacant space, it was somewhat used for storage.
Okay. And then back to the parking, it appears this other driveway is wide enough for two cars, in terms of width, probably three cars deep. What is the plan for parking? How will parking be managed on the site? Tandem parking can be particularly challenging when it isn't the, you know, obviously, if you've got three units, you don't necessarily have people from the same household. So how are you going to manage parking on the site?
The parking will be double parking on the side. It can probably provide for up to six parking spaces. The downtown area is mostly a walking area. It's interesting to, well, it's just the downtown area for parking spaces. Under the zoning ordinance, that's a little bit further down, the D1 municipal downtown parking, mixed-use area, doesn't require any parking.
Thank you.
I'm not going to sit here and argue with you and say that we don't need any parking in the downtown area. I think we all need parking. And that's why the study was done by the Alderman, to try, and the planning board, to try to get some relief for parking down in that particular area.
Do you have anything more, Mr. Mankara?
No, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Yes, hold on.
Oh, Mr. Boucher, thank you.
So can you just speak real quickly to your third page of the density?
Mr. Boucher, could you just pick up your mask a little so I could hear you? I don't know if it's my, it's probably not my age as well as the mask.
We're all getting it. The third page of your handout has the density, has the density, the density of the units, your third page here. Can you just speak to where this stands with the surrounding properties?
For density, the, I think at the lower end of the density, not the higher end. And if I was coming here to add a building, adding to the building, I don't think I would have come. Because I didn't, the space is important. But the fact that we are not adding to the building and the fact that there's a need for apartments, especially in that particular area, especially, it's interesting that we, the apartments will be renovated. It was interesting to me when the applicant came to me with an architect, which is not usually the case in that particular area of downtown.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaw, how many bedrooms will each of the units, how many bedrooms for each unit?
There will be two each.
I don't know if the mic picked that up. It was two each. Just to make sure it's on the microphone.
Any more questions from the board? Is there anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this application? Anybody in the room? I see anybody, anybody on Zoom? Okay. Is there anybody in the room with questions, concerns, or opposition to the application? I'm not seeing anybody. How about on Zoom? I'm seeing anybody? Okay. In that case, I will close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw, your comments?
I guess I'm struggling with this. I just feel very concerned about the density of this, the intensity of the density of this request. And, you know, I see, you know, this is coming in at the 1,100 square feet per unit, which other than 5,300, 5,300 and a half, this will be the lowest one. If there were three units, it would be roughly around 1,500 square feet per unit, I think it's. Or no, it's actually a little bit more than that. I think it's, I had done the math earlier. But it definitely, and the requirement would be that it's around 2,600. So of all the properties in the area, only one is meeting the density requirement of the one cited here on Chestnut Street. So I appreciate that this is already fairly intensively utilized in the immediate area. I just am concerned about the level of intensity of this request. So I'm interested to see what the opinion of the fellow board members is, and I'll go from there.
Thank you. Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Chair. Actually, Mr. Shaw, on this sheet of paperwork says the 1,107 for the density per unit, I think that should be more like 1,450 because the lot is 4,429 square feet. There's actually three residential units. We wouldn't count the density for the commercial unit. It would be just for the three residential units. That would be just under 1,500 square feet for the residential density.
Okay.
It's better than the 1,107 that's shown.
Okay. Thank you. That's.
Yeah, for some reason, this table has four units shown for.
Because there's, the convenience store is counted as the fourth unit, I guess, in the way the calculation was done, right? So to Mr. Fox's point, the city views it only as the three residential units for the density calculation.
Density is only for residential. We don't count commercial square footage as density. That's more of a residential calculation.
That's interesting. So if the, if the convenience store was 3,000 square feet?
It wouldn't require, density really is people living per square feet. Like, say, for example, like in an R9 zoning district, you're supposed to have a 9,000 square foot lot. In the RC zone, you're required to have 3,484 square feet of land per unit. That's really more of a land unit for residential. This just happens to be, you know, the lot is 4,429 square feet. And if you divide that by the three units, that would be the approximately 1,450 square feet of land per unit, where this zoning district requires, you know, a little bit more.
Mr. Chair.
Who's Courier?
As far as the residential use goes, they would need a minimum of 1.5 spaces per unit. Four and a half would round that up to five, plus the commercial convenience store use.
That would require two spaces.
So we're looking at approximately seven.
Seven spaces. And, but I heard there were six.
But the zoning board really doesn't deal with.
That would be addressed at a planning board level.
At a planning board, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Any other comments at this time? Okay.
I don't know if you asked.
I was asking for questions, concerns, or opposition. And I didn't see anybody in the room or on Zoom with any of that.
I thought we were in a public meeting.
Yeah, we moved into the meeting.
We closed the public hearing and opened the public meeting.
I was the first to comment.
Comment, yes. And Mr. Boucher, did you have comments or?
Sure. I also was looking at the density at first. But again, with the recalculation, I'm not as concerned as before, again. So what I look at is, this, again, the property is an existing property. It's been there for a long time. Like Mr. Courier and most of us, we've been down that street. I know that store and I know that area. I didn't realize the existing portion in the back until I really looked at this case. So in my mind, this is all existing space. So there's no, there's not coming here to add space. It's existing space that's there. And, you know, due to doing co-calculation, these are not tiny little apartments. They're generous-sized apartments, I would say, for apartments in the downtown area. So I think it's like, to me, is a positive type of plan here for the apartment. So I guess what I'm saying is, you know, I want to hear more of what, I realize I say, I'm saying that the special conditions in my mind would be that this is existing property that can be utilized to the benefit, for a benefit, not only of the owner, but for the citizens of Nashua. I think it would be good rental space. Yeah, I'm thinking about parking too. But again, if you're renting anything from this property, you're going to understand that if you have an automobile, you're going to be playing musical cards. If that's what you have to do, maybe you'll move in there, you don't have a vehicle. But again, I think the parking issue, because of the commercial, will be addressed at the planning board stage. So I'll just stop there. But I'm just, you know, my point is, is that it is an existing property that I believe is underutilized. It can be utilized for this fashion. I don't see, I don't really see how or what else we could do or could be done there besides, you know, having residential property. And we could certainly expand the store and all that. But again, I'm just looking at what's existing now.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
I certainly appreciate, you know, somebody buying a property with the intent of fixing it up. And, you know, that is always appreciated by me. You know, I am struggling with the density of it. I feel that, you know, when there's different owners and different units, which is, you know, the whole purpose of different units, you know, the parking cannot be coordinated. And, you know, I feel it's dangerous. I mean, I see, you know, a lot of kids playing in the neighborhood and going in and out of the store. It's what the store is there for. And, you know, to be backing out, I see, I really don't see any way other than, you know, each occupant backing out. And you really, I don't know if I'd even call the driveway two cars wide at the entrance because you have to squeeze to the right if you're on the left-hand side to get around the stairs. And I, and I'm uncomfortable with that. And I do see other uses. I mean, you could have, you know, a much bigger apartment on the top. You could have storage or a bigger store on the bottom. It's not our, I don't think it's our, the board's job to decide what an owner could do with the property. But the owner walked into this eyes wide open, knowing what's permitted and unpermitted. And I'm uncomfortable with the density and the overage with the store there and the intensity of the use of the street. So I'm struggling to find support for it.
Thank you. Mr. Mankara?
So, oh, well, I'm not that concerned about the density. I walked around the area. I do think it's consistent with the densities that we see. I am concerned, though, at the intensity of use on the property and, in particular, the parking. You know, frankly, I would not have a concern for one additional residential unit. We do have testimony that there were originally two residential units on the second floor. That kind of makes sense. And that's something that you may be able to accommodate with the tandem parking. But I am concerned for conflicts with the parking. You've got no way, that I can see. I asked the question about what the plan was for parking, and there wasn't an answer. And I'm surprised if the intent were to have a total of three residential units and a convenience store on the property. We also heard from the attorney that convenience store patrons use that driveway for parking. So I just don't understand how that could all work without the potential for significant conflict. And, you know, I'm just, I'm surprised that more thought wasn't given to that. So that's really my hesitation. It's the intensity of the use. You know, I may be okay with one additional unit, but I just don't understand how you can accommodate a total of three residential units and a commercial unit on that site.
Thank you. I'm sort of in the same position as Mr. Mankara. I mean, if it were just three apartments, maybe that would be okay. Even though the parking bothers me, but again, we're not talking, we don't talk about parking here. But the intensity of the use with three apartments and the convenience store for this small lot does seem a bit much to me. So I'm really, really struggling with it. Any other comments from the board? Well, let's, I guess let's make a motion, have a motion made and see where it goes. Somebody care to make a motion? No volunteer. Mr. Courier, well, you're the clerk. You really, all right. I'll tell you, I'll make the motion.
Mr. Chair? Yes. Just a thought, though, depending, I'm not even sure which way you want to make the motion for. But it seems that both you and Mr. Mankara talked about potentially feeling okay supporting the one additional apartment, to have the total of two apartments and the convenience store usage. And I'm wondering if what the board's thought is about potentially approving that level of use for this, so.
So we would have to, we would reopen the public hearing and have Attorney Prendergast come back up and.
I think we should.
Or maybe table it?
Deliver a, I think Mr. Shaw is asking our board, the board's opinion of the idea.
We can certainly discuss that. I mean, I.
Okay, so I guess there's, yeah, we could table it, we could reopen or ask the applicant to come back with thoughts about that. Or we could just, you know, treat the case as presented and, you know, vote it up or down.
Well, okay. So what do you think we should do, Mr. Shaw?
I think, I guess I feel like I could support the two apartments and the convenience store. That's that level of use. And I think there, I guess I'd like to see that be a consideration. My concern is, I know sometimes we talk about, you know, that's not what was presented by the applicant. So we would be approving a lesser request than what the applicant came forward with. But we have done that at other points in time. I know we can't go into something greater intensive. But I think we felt that it's in our purview to scale back what we're willing to approve, so.
Mr. Boucher, your thoughts?
I think that if we were to move this way, I think it would serve the applicant to at least open up the public hearing again, just to understand whether or not this is even an option they want. Because if it's not, then I think we would vote in a certain way. There would be a motion maybe made in a certain way. I don't know which way, but that would, it would, you know, it would just be on face of what this is. If there's something different, then at least we'll understand where that is so that, I think, again, we're trying to do the best job we can for the applicant, the citizens of Nashua, and not put somebody in a position where it's not where we want it to go or they want it to go.
Right. Mr. Courier, your thoughts?
Well, I just want to point out Mr. Fox's hand is up as well, but I didn't, if you're asking.
Thank you, Mr. Courier. Members of the board, Mr. Chair. Use number 90 is the use variance that the applicant applied for, which is to have the convenience floor, convenience store on the first floor and one, and two units upstairs and one downstairs. store on the first floor and one, and two units upstairs and one downstairs. The ordinance allows commercial on the first, commercial on the first floor and residential units above. So, if, I heard the board discussing possibly removing one unit, it would have to be the unit on the first floor, most likely. And just, it would be more consistent with the ordinance, if they had the two on the second floor and the commercial space on the first floor. That's something that the applicant would have to discuss and agree with. But I would suggest, as the board stated, have the applicant come up and reopen the public hearing and see what direction they'd like to go in.
Thank you. Mr. Carrier?
Yes, I just wanted to get my comments out, you know, on Mr. Shaw's thought that we're deliberating on. And that is, I'm, I'm uncomfortable of, I realize that, you know, there's probably a majority of the board uncomfortable with three and maybe not with two. I'm uncomfortable with the board moving ahead with a, with two, because there's, there's not a plan in play. There's not a design in place as to how the parking's going to work, or where the units will be, or addressing the point just brought up by Mr. Falk. For me, like, say for two, I would, at minimum, you know, want to see a specific plan that lays it all out, just versus kind of like, eh, three instead of two. It almost encourages applicants to come in and ask for high. And if they don't get it, maybe they'll get a little low. So, I'd be, I'm not enthusiastic about moving or considering a downgrade, so to say, to two units without a specific plan before, which really couldn't happen tonight. So, perhaps a table. But, but also, the request between a three and a two is, to me, is very different. I, and, you know, to me, that would certainly, for me, would pass a Fisher v. Dover test. It would be a completely different application with a different plan and a different parking. So, I guess if anything, if we have a plan before, I feel up or down. It, I go a bit that way, if not that. You know, a table, but I'm uncomfortable with deliberating on a two unit when there's no design in front of us. That's where I'm at.
Thank you. Mr. Mancara, your comments?
I tend to agree with Mr. Carrier. I think that perhaps a motion to table would give the applicant the opportunity to amend the plan if they so wished and come back to us, you know, obviously with an amended plan. So, I'd be comfortable with that. If the board felt that it preferred to, you know, vote up or down, I'd be comfortable with that as well.
Thank you. Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion to reopen the public hearing, to request the applicant to, you know, give their opinion as to what they would like us to do. Is that?
I second the motion.
Okay. Mr. Mancara, how do you vote on that motion?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier?
In favor.
And I, Mr. Linnell votes in favor, okay, that the, we're reopening the public hearing for the applicant to come back and obviously has heard our discussion. And we are asking if it would be acceptable to table the, this request to a future meeting where we would entertain a different design, or would the applicant prefer us to just go ahead and vote on the application as presented? And please remind us of your name and address for the record, Mr. Purni.
Mr. Chairman, we've talked amongst ourselves, and we would be willing to amend our plan to just have the apartment on the upstairs. So, there'd be just two apartments on the upstairs and the convenience store on the first floor, and not go for the, eliminate the apartment in the rear of the convenience store.
Okay. So, what I would like to do then is to table this application, because we don't have a plan that shows, that shows that, unless we're comfortable with, with just eliminating the apartment on the first floor, which means the use variance isn't required. So, we're just talking about the area variance.
Our plan just shows the floor plan of both floors. We just would eliminate the rear plan and the
Yep, okay. We could do that.
Mr. Falk, may I have a comment?
Mr. Falk?
As far as a new plan, it looks like to me that there's, there's two floors here. So, the, the plan for the second floor would remain the same, two units upstairs. And the plan for the first floor, it just, the whole thing would show as a convenience store, and we're just X-ing out that unfinished proposed apartment number three on the first floor.
That's all, that's all, that would be all we would do. We would be glad to do that.
Part, would be less parking required.
Okay. So, we would, we would not need to vote on the use variance, because there is not a, an apartment and a convenience store on the same floor. Is that correct?
Well, actually, since it's in the RC zone, Use Number 90 is not permitted in the RC zone, so that's still in play. The use variance would still be appropriate for this zoning district.
Oh, it would, okay. I misunderstood.
The only thing that would be different is variance number two for the minimum land area at forty-four hundred and twenty-nine square feet existing, ten thousand four hundred and fifty-four square feet required. It would be six thousand nine hundred and seventy, I believe, square feet required. Or whatever, three thousand four hundred and eighty-four times two is, I believe it's sixty-nine seventy, if my math is working correctly at this time of night.
Ms. Purni is faster with her calculator than I am.
Sixty-nine.
It was good.
I was off by, what, one square foot, two square feet, so.
Two, it was good.
They'd need sixty-nine hundred and sixty-nine square feet, because it's actually three thousand four hundred and eighty-four point eight.
Okay.
That would be right, sixty-nine seventy. You have to round it up at half a square foot.
So, is the board happy with this proposal? We're going to go ahead and do that? Okay. So, thank you, Mr. Purni. Are you?
Thank you.
Should we close the hearing?
Yeah, close the, closing the public hearing, reopening the public meeting. We are going to proceed with a modification to the application to eliminate the first-floor apartment, and there will be two dwelling units on the second floor. So, I will make a motion, because I've been making notes here. Make a motion on behalf of Tavares Estevez Corporation, 58 Chestnut Street, Sheet 81, Lot 69, requesting the following: Use variance from land use code section 190-15, Table 15-1, Number 90, to maintain existing first-floor convenience store and one dwelling unit on the second floor, and to create one dwelling unit on the second, additional dwelling unit on the second floor, for a total of two dwelling units. And two, variance from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area, four thousand four hundred and twenty-nine square feet existing, six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine square feet required. This is in the RC zone, Ward 4. The board finds that this variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property that's existing and carved out into apartments. And the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. The board believes that this is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, that it will not adversely affect the property values of surrounding parcels, that it's not contrary to public interest and substantial justice will be served. So, I make a motion to approve the use variance and the area variance. Do I have a second? Mr. Shaw, thank you. Any discussion of the motion? Ready to vote? Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor of the amended motion that you just spoke.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Linnell, votes in favor. That's five to nothing. The amended application has been approved. Variants have been approved. Please be aware, there's a thirty-day window of appeal. You know who to talk to if you have any questions.
Thank you very much, and thank you for the very good decision on the level of thank you.
Okay. We have a rehearing request. Now, I was not present at the meeting that this original application was heard, but I did review the minutes. I'm not sure whether I should vote on this or not. Comments?
We've historically had members still vote who were not present. This has happened actually a number of times and
Okay. Well, then, I will vote, because I have carefully read the, the minutes and the application and the text of the rehearing request, so.
And I'm in the same situation for this case.
I'm sorry?
I'm in the same situation for this case also.
Yeah, okay. There, I'll just comment that there is no public input during a rehearing request. This is solely a matter for the board. So, the owner is Max Properties LLC. Requester of the rehearing is Attorney Jeffrey Zoll. Case address is 18 Granite Street, Nashua, New Hampshire. Sheet 44, Lot 134. Requested a variance from land use code section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum land area, six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine square feet required, five thousand three hundred and ten square feet proposed to subdivide one lot into two lots and construct a new two-family dwelling. This is the RC zone, Ward 3. This application was denied on the, what date is that?
Nine twenty-eight.
On September 28th, yes. So, let's just get some, because we'll discuss each of the points of law in order, in terms of, was there any procedural error? This includes improper notice denying someone the right to be heard. Any comments from the board about that? No? Okay. Comments about, was it an illegal decision? In other words, did the board fail to completely address each of the points of law required for the special exception and/or variance? Any comments from the board? Mr. Carrier?
I think the board addressed all the points of law at the time, you know, at the nine twenty-eight meeting. I think, you know, there was differing opinions as to, you know, in terms of, say, you know, there's a lot of denser houses on the street, but a few not. But that's just, I feel, repeated in the rehearing request. So, I feel it was completely addressed then.
Thank you. Okay. Does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Any board comments on that question? Mr. Carrier?
Yeah, I think there is some new information here, but I think it was certainly available on the original hearing. There's some references to some pre-existing cases from years ago that was certainly available then. It wasn't brought up. There's a new, also, another, like, a real estate appraisal here. That could have been done at the previous meeting. We did have one before. And there's some information here about a potential buyer habitat for humanity, but I think that is not part of the board's consideration, what use it might be, or has come up. And even, even though I think that's a really good use, that is not contingent upon the land and land use, and I don't think the board should consider that anyway. So, in summary, I say no.
Okay. Last, is there anything which would, would or could cause the board to make a different decision? Any comments from the board about that one? No, not seeing any. Okay. So, now we're going to vote each, each of these points, and I will do a roll call vote on each one. Was there any procedural error? Mr. Mancara? Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
And Mr. Linnell says no. So, that's five no. Was it an illegal decision? Mr. Mancara?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
And Mr. Linnell says no. That's five no. Does the request for rehearing contain any new information not presented or available to the board at the original public hearing? Mr. Mancara?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
And I, Mr. Linnell says no. That's five no for that. Is there anything which would or could cause the board to make a different decision? Mr. Mancara?
No.
Mr. Shaw?
No.
Mr. Boucher?
No.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
And I'm, Mr. Linnell say no. That's five no's. So, this rehearing request is denied.
Motion?
I think we
Yeah.
Make a motion.
Yes, make a, make a, right. Thank you. Okay. So, I will make a motion to deny this rehearing request. Max Properties, this is about the September 28th decision to subdivide one lot into two lots and construct a new two-family dwelling. So, make a motion to deny. Do I have a second? Mr. Carrier, thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I just want to make the comment that the board had already voted, you know, went through the four, you know, major points, and had already voted, that we didn't find any cause unanimously for each of those four points. So, I want to make sure.
So, thank you. That should be part of the motion, yes. Yes. So, I amend the motion to include Mr. Shaw's comments that the board considered each of the four questions, and it was unanimous for each of them, there were, that the answer was no. So, Mr. Carrier, do you agree to that, since you seconded it, right?
Yes, I second the amended motion.
Second the amended motion. Okay, thank you. Any further discussion of the motion? Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Mancara votes in favor of the motion to deny.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor of the denial.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor of the denial.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor of the denial.
And I, Mr. Linnell, vote in favor of the denial. That's five to nothing. The motion for rehearing is denied. So, we have minutes from, let's see, review of agenda for regional impact. That's it. We do have an agenda for the November 23rd meeting. Does anybody see any regional impact for this? I did not see any.
I did not see any.
Mr. Boucher, do you see any?
No.
Mr. Shaw, do you see any?
No.
Mr. Mancara, do you see any?
No.
Okay. So, no regional impact there. And we do have minutes from the October 26th meeting. Does anybody have any comments on the, on the minutes? Not seeing anybody. Somebody make a motion to approve the minutes? Mr. Carrier, please. Thank you.
I make a motion to approve the October 26 minutes as presented in our package.
And Mr. Shaw, thank you for the second. Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Mancara, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And I, Mr. Linnell, vote in favor. Okay, so the minutes are approved, and I will make a motion to adjourn.
Actually, Chair.
We have the meeting, the first draft, the meeting scheduled for 2022.
We were just asked to think about it, right?
Yes.
If the board can take a look at them, we did, we did make some, we did make some changes to it, that we saw incorrect dates. We did make some changes. We'll send that out in the next package. But just if you see anything. But we did take into consideration the primary, the New Hampshire primary, as well as the election day, and we believe the President's Day and Martin Luther King Day are all, taking, Civil Rights Day are all
Civil Rights Day are all taken care of in this, so I believe now that Kate and I looked over, I think it's all correct, but we'll send it out in the next package.
Okay, so now I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second? I saw Mr. Courier's hand up first, okay, so we are adjourned at eight o'clock. Thank you.